Is not as easy a saying to balance. Priority, who goes first? Who do I own my allegiance to?
Right. And for me, that was part of the story was my own struggle to decide how can I be a writer and be a part of a community and be married and be connected to my family? How can I do all of those things and have a job to bring in an income?
Mm-hmm.
And still carve out the kind of time and space you need for the writing? Not just, you know, emotional, psychological space as well.
Mm-hmm.
And so Robert fascinated me because he had taken it to such an extreme. He didn't have a family. He never married. And so he, you know, he made his life so simple that he was able to focus on the writing in this very pure way, and I admired that.
Mm-hmm.
But I also had to understand that wasn't for me.
I was gonna say, not to, not that he missed, if that was what he chose and that's what made him happy. But you wouldn't want to give up the happiness that you found beyond your writing and on the other side of your writing for what he had and have only one or two friends standing beside you when it was time to say goodbye.
Right. So Robert did have a lot of friends in town, but, you know, he never invited you to the place where he lived. You only saw him on the street or in the coffee shops. So it was, it was a different kind of a friendship?
Acquaintances.
Yes, people loved him.
Strangers? The world is full of strangers until you say hello. And then you become friends.
Right, right.
So if it's just a hello over the fence or in the coffee shop, yeah, there's lots of acquaintances in life, lots of people you know. But friendships are few and far between real ones.
Mm-hmm.
A lot of people go through life and never, never have that experience. I'm lucky. And I treasure, I used to babysit when I was 15. And this woman is now my lifelong best friend. What a gift.
No, it's true. Those kinds of friendships are true gifts.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, and we need to remember that and hold on to them. So I felt very fortunate to develop the friendship that I did with him.
Have you heard from his family or other people that knew him and thought they knew him better?
Uh, you know, that's, that's an interesting question because as part of doing the work on the book, I interviewed a lot of people. And I frequently had the experience in Portsmouth with people learning that I was writing the book, saying, you need to talk to so-and-so. He, he knew Robert very well. And I would go and, you know, speak with this person, and he would say, you know, I didn't really know Robert.
Was he right-handed or left-handed?
Exactly. So no one stepped forward who said, like, I knew him in a way you didn't, or I knew him better. Many people said to me, thank you so much for, for getting him on the page, you know, that we have now this record of who he was. But anyway, it was very interesting to do all those interviews and, and to discover that though, I learned things about him. There were people who had known him over the years who could tell me some things about him, but he had been a really profoundly private person with everyone.
My friend, there's four of us, and everybody's got a piece of the puzzle.
Right.
And we collect, and then we go home at night and we start putting the puzzle.
Right.
See, I just found, she's been here 50, 60 years, and I just found out that she immigrated in 1950 because she, like Robert, you don't say directly, when did you come to America? It's none of your business. If she wants you to know, she'll tell you.
Right. Yeah, so he didn't talk about himself that much. The way you think, you know, in conversation with acquaintances or friends, you trade information about your past, right? He, he didn't really do that.
No, but he absorbed from you.
Right.
And he listened to the world.
Oh, yes, oh, yes.
And the listeners are most often the most thoughtful people that I know because they don't have to blab and they don't have to keep on talking, but they can put a picture of the room together like that, just by listening to the conversations that are going on.
Yeah, he, he took a lot in. He, he really did. He was a great observer, very keen observer.
Mm-hmm.
He had a fantastic sense of humor. He was very funny.
Good.
And he, he really made people laugh.
Now, what have you done with his papers? Not that there were all that many, or assembled.
Uh, they are at the Portsmouth Public Library.
Oh, good.
Yeah.
And they catalog?
They, they cataloged them, so that was great. I, I think that's a good place for them. They're accessible to anyone.
Good.
And they did a really nice job cataloging everything, so everything is there.
There used to be a library in Burlington, Vermont for unpublished literature. And you know that, you write, and then nobody wants to publish it, but it's your book.
Right.
And look at what time you spent in it.
Right.
And I have a dear friend who wrote a beautiful novel about Rye and never just got picked up, so we put it in Broughton Library for her. And as the years went by, when Hollywood, which is going through a dearth right now of good story, can they remake anything else? They would go to the Broughton Library and they would look at those things that were on the shelf, and they, they got a second chance at being noticed. So now we're gonna break, and we're gonna let you read so that they don't have to believe me how good a writer you are and feel your heart and soul coming through in the chapter. Back in a minute.
I often ran into Robert in the afternoon, marking a stooped path along Congress Street to the post office. If I stepped directly in front of him and said hello when I met him in the post office lobby, he would raise his eyes and return the greeting. I felt that I had committed an act of violation when I did this. On the street, I would see him approaching and ready myself to speak, but when he did not look up, I would let him move past and go on. Sometimes I stopped to watch him from a distance, thinking that I might absorb a bit of his quiet concentration. I recognized that in comparison to Robert, I had been and still was a flighty butterfly ricocheting between the world of people and the world of my writing. His focused attention had clearly been honed through years of practice. His cadence was measured as though he were considering each step before committing to it, his feet going before the rest of his body. This gave him the appearance of moving at an angle, pulling himself along. If it rained or snowed, he added a pair of old-fashioned rubbers over his shoes, propped a tweed cap on his head, and wrapped an orange scarf around his neck. These were his only concessions to the weather. I got to know Robert to the extent that I could be said to know him through our chance meetings on the street, though a brief exchange of glances was sometimes our only communication. I would remember his averted eyes as if to suggest we both had more important business at hand than trading common pleasantries when I returned home to my desk. When I lost face in my writing, I thought of him next door making his penny collections of poems. If he could carve such a unique and wonderful life for himself, surely I could keep writing despite the rejections and dubious prospects for publication.
Very well done. What a gift of friendship reciprocal. He is like a smile. You smiled at him and it took a long while, but you finally got a smile out of him. And he gave you his friendship, and now you've given him a lovely token back. We should all be so lucky. Thank you, far Robert. Thank you from me and anybody who wants to take the time to pick it up again. It's capital to say, the penny poet of Portsmouth, Kathleen Towler. Thank you very much for bringing it to us and good luck.
Thank you so much for having me.
That's it for Off the Shelf Books on Tour. See you next time.
We want to be that safe space for each other for the rest of our lives.
She protects me, I protect her. We are officially going to start a family. We will protect them from anything. I'm in the fire department and I'm in the National Guard.
I was tasked to administer the vaccine in Oxford. So I saw firsthand what we were dealing with. We decided to approach the vaccine with openness. A lot of questions were asked. When the vaccine was available to us, we were able to get it.
Her mom is very immunocompromised.
We've not lost anyone close to us from COVID. I really think so much of that is due to the vaccine. I don't know what would have happened if my mom would have gotten COVID. I'm glad I don't know.
I got the vaccine for others. I was worried about passing it on.
People are worried about the vaccine and what effects that might have later. I'm worried about living in the time that I have right now. I want to enjoy my mom and my grandparents while they are here. This time right now is precious to me.
Hey, so your profile says you're negative on PrEP.
Yeah, I've been on PrEP a couple of years. How about you?
No, but I've been thinking about it. It's easy and really effective if taken as prescribed.
And you gotta get tested?
Yeah, you have to be negative to take PrEP. That means an HIV test before you start and then every few months, but it's worth it.
Hey, what'd you make in there?
Uh, new dinner plans?
Welcome to the Tuesday, March 15th, 2022 meeting of the Long Meadow School Committee. Just a reminder that all votes, while participating remotely, must be made by roll call vote. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Nicole will start us off with correspondence.
The following correspondence was received by the school committee. An email from Ms. Jennifer DePond dated Sunday, February 27th, 2022 regarding the elementary literacy curriculum, and an email from Andrea dated February 28th, 2022 regarding masking.
Thank you, Nicole. Next up, we have a possible motion for the approval of minutes.
I move that the school committee approve the minutes for the March 1st, 2022 school committee meeting as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? And am I correct, Sue, that there are no school committee members on Zoom?
I don't see any.
Okay.
I'm just gonna put you in here.
All right, then we will vote. Susie?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Gianna?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
And yes from me. Next up is visitor comments. Again, with visitor comments, you have up to three minutes to talk. And again, we welcome and read all of the emails that we get, so if you do not want to speak, you can always send us an email. Are there any visitors who would like to make a comment? And if you do, raise your hand either virtually or with your actual hand. All right. And I think everybody on Zoom are our invited guests, so we are going to move on. Next up, school committee announcements and recognitions. Do we have any announcements and recognitions, school committee members? Nicole?
I just wanted to say a big thank you to all of the teachers and staff for, at Long Meadow High School for the Parents Night last week. It was great to see so many families out and really enjoyable to get a chance to catch up on all the great things happening over at the school.
Absolutely. Other announcements? Gianna?
Speaking of great things happening at the high school, sophomore lock-in is back, and they are crushing it, trying to get teachers and staff and parents to volunteer in order to make it a safe and positive and just plain awesome event. So if you are so inclined, you don't have to be a sophomore parent or guardian. If you wanna chaperone from eight to 11 or 11 to two on Friday, April 1st, please see the high school about a quarry form if you are not quarried. But again, they're super excited, they're working really hard, all of the students and the staff that are involved, and just looking forward to a really fun time. I know that Nicole and I will be chaperoning happily.
Looking forward to it.
And sleepily.
Yes.
Thank you.
Excellent. Other announcements, recognitions? All right. Business with guests. All right, we're gonna talk about recognition of our intern supervisors, and I think Marty is gonna kick that off.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate the chance tonight to celebrate the first semester of our internship program at Long Meadow High School. It's been, it's been a great success, and so we have some, some guests with us that are representative of the experience of our, our mentors and our mentees. And so I'm gonna start by just sharing a screen and has a list of our Fall '22 internship placements, and for some reason, it looks like I don't have screen sharing rights. I wonder, Sue, if you're able to jump the rise. Not a problem if we can't share that right now. Sue, if you're able to bring me some highlights. So while we're doing that, no harm, I'm gonna turn it over to high school principal Tom Landers, who will introduce our, our career coordinator, Erin Corbett. So Tom, why don't you take it away, and then Eliot will try and do that screen share.
Thanks, Marty. I'll be brief, but I just wanted to acknowledge Erin's work and thank you to Cara and Angela, who are gonna present in a little bit. But I just wanted to say, as you know, we have, we hit the ground running last year. We hired the right person when we hired Erin Corbett because she used the last part of last year to engage in planning and reaching out, making contacts, and creating these opportunities for our students. And this fall was a success, and we had a dozen students who were involved in it. This semester, I think we're at 19, and as we, as we're engaged in schedule sign-ups for next year right now, now I think there's a good chance of us doubling that number or coming pretty close to doubling that number. And it has to do with the education and the outreach and the excitement that Erin has built. So I just wanted to acknowledge that, that work, and I think I shared with you, and I know you've sat in and interviewed some of our student interns, but it was the highlight for me, listening to what they learned, what they experienced, the skills that they, they helped to strengthen and, and acknowledge that they have to continue to grow in. But that, that mid-year experience for listening to the interns was probably the highlight. So with that, I just want to acknowledge Erin, and Erin, I'll hand it over to you, and you can take it from there.
Thank you very much. So first off, I want to thank the school committee for having us here tonight and for giving us some time to recognize the difference that all of these mentors have made on the educational experience of our students here at Long Meadow High School. I'd also like to thank the administration at both the school and district level, as they have truly helped to jumpstart this program. Not only have they advocated for a work-based learning program for our students, but they have consistently been some of our greatest supporters, asking our students about their experiences when they see them in the hallways, spreading word about what we're doing in the community, and even showing up to listen to the student presentations that they gave at the end of the semester this year. We're extremely lucky to have leadership that recognizes the importance of career readiness activities and experiential learning opportunities. And for anyone that's not familiar with the internship class, it's fairly new and a unique opportunity that we offer to our 12th grade students. It's a semester-long class where students get hands-on experience in a field that they are interested in pursuing after they graduate. We connect them with a mentor at a local business or organization, and they typically have, typically leave the building to spend time with their mentor during that class. In many cases, this works out to about seven hours per week. And throughout the semester, the students help their mentors on projects, they are assigned individual tasks, they complete their own creative pieces of work, they sit in on meetings, and they do so much more. During the first semester, as you heard, we have 12 students, and out of those 12 students, we had seven of them continue on into our second semester. It was not something that we had planned on, but the experiences were going so well that when the mentors and the students were both, our landers was open to that option, which was, has been fantastic for everybody involved. So just a quick highlight of some of the fields that our students have worked in so far this year. In healthcare, engineering, real estate, carpentry, graphic design, animal science, education, history, accounting, entrepreneurship. We have somebody working in the field of jewelry right now, hotel management, information technology, and film and video production. Two times during the first semester, we asked the internship students to come together and share an update of what they'd been doing. I was blown away by the depth and the value of the experiences that the mentors had provided for our students, and in turn, by the growth that our students had made in such a short period of time. Our students spoke about the lessons that they had learned, the skills that they had developed, but also about the relationships that had been built and the confidence that they now possess. For most of them, the internship experience was their favorite part of the day and a chance for them to leave and pursue their passions, hands-on. In a time in their lives where there's so much uncertainty, the internships gave them a place to grow and become who they wanted to be. So less than a year ago, I was at the beginning stage of this endeavor, reaching out to local businesses and organizations to talk about what we envisioned for the program and to see what, to see if they might be open to mentoring one of our students. I honestly wasn't sure what to expect, but was quickly reminded that we're surrounded by an amazing community with professionals that want to help and are open to working with our students. After our initial set of meetings, when I got to know the mentors a little bit more closely, I was confident that we would be connecting our students with a wonderful group of professionals, but I really still had no idea the extent to which they would go above and beyond for our students. They have been patient, supportive, welcoming, and generous with their time and with their knowledge. I really cannot thank our mentors enough for everything that they have done and that they continue to do for our students. And before I wrap up, one quick highlight that I wanted to share with you all is that out of those 12 students from our first semester, three of them have been offered employment, you know, with their, their mentors from the first semester. So really, it is a tribute to their hard work and everything that they have put into it. This program is growing, and I'm so proud to be a part of it. So thank you to our mentors for everything that they have done. We're really, we can't thank you enough for everything that you've done.
Thank you, Erin.
Thanks, Mom.
Marty, are you gonna continue?
Yeah. Thank you, thank you, Erin, for that. That's a, that's a wonderful explanation of the program and explanation of benefits that our, their students have received, so thank you so much for that. And we've invited a mentor-mentee partnership here to kind of help us understand the benefits further, and so we had great partnership that Erin wanted to highlight between student Angela Gentile and a mentor from William Reavis Realty. And so to speak on behalf of the mentor-mentee partnerships, we have Cara DiMatrappolis. Cara, you wanna kick us off and talk about your experience as a, as a mentor to Angela and what it meant to your organization and to Angela, perhaps?
Sure, yes. Cara DiMatrappolis from, I'm the marketing coordinator at William Reavis, and our manager, Karen Reganini, is also on the call today. But when Erin first approached us, Karen and I didn't really know what to expect, but we really loved the idea that, that you even considered real estate as a full-time career for, for these students to explore. And both Max and Angela totally, like, were amazing. They, they went above and beyond everything. Real estate is very much a self-discipline job, and both of them were beyond that. I mean, they just, Angela has this background with family business and just like an intrinsic knowledge in how to be an entrepreneur. And so she just took things and she ran with it, whether it was mundane things, which, as we were learning what to help them with and what to teach them, they were more than willing. They wanted to see everything, whether it was something I did, because marketing is a part of being an agent, because you have to market yourself. We have, we're a little different, where we have a little extra support in my role. Or they got to go with other agents. And so Angela, she had to go to an inspection of like a multifamily property, so that is like eye-opening right there, because pretty much tons of things can happen with, with multiple properties. Max took into a bunch of open houses and some walkthroughs, like final walkthroughs before closing, and Angela also was able to go to a broker tour, which was great, because she got to meet other agents and kind of see how those work. I really loved getting to know Angela. We connected on just like a, a personal level. She seems a lot more mature than, than 18 years old, you know? She just, she was great to work with, and I really enjoyed having her. So we were thrilled that they were coming to stay for a second semester and that the opportunity to actually study for their real estate exam has been great for them. I mean, now they can just take their test and they can roll right into a job with us or anything that they want, because that will really open doors for them. So we're really excited for their future, and we loved having them.
That's outstanding. Thank you so much, Cara. And Karen, thank you to you for allowing us to partner with William Reavis. It's been, it's been a really rewarding experience. Angela, if we could put you on the spot and tell us a little bit about your experience from the student perspective, and what, what the internship program has meant to you.
Yes, of course. For everyone who doesn't know me, I'm Angela Gentile. I am a senior at Long Meadow, and I'm obviously interning at William Reavis. William Reavis is an amazing environment with even more amazing people. Karen and Cara, my two mentors, have helped me through all aspects of this program, and I couldn't be more thankful. My mentors and the various agents at the office have all taught me so much in my short time interning. During the first semester, I would do a number of tasks, including independent projects, helping an agent or my mentor with things that they were working on, watching company videos that were, that were designed for new agents, sitting in on meetings with my mentors and whoever they were meeting with, and so much more. Some specific projects that I have worked on are putting together booklets for clients, entering new information into the database, observing with an agent during inspection, which was one of my favorites. My favorite part is getting to meet new people and being able to learn hands-on. Obviously, the real estate industry is all about people relations, and it has been my favorite part. I've met so many amazing people, and I couldn't be more thankful. After this first semester of the internship, I spoke with my mentors and decided that I wanted to continue, which is the best. This semester has been quite different, though, because I have been able to begin my real estate license course, which is online, which is also white plus. I am almost finished taking the online classes, and I'll be studying to take the licensing exam this spring. So my goal now is to become a licensed real estate agent within three or four months. It is so amazing that I am able to have this opportunity. I'm excited to see what's next, and I would recommend this internship to all that are interested, because it is such a great learning experience. I want to thank Cara and Karen for everything that they have done for me this year. I feel so lucky to have had the chance to learn from such amazing mentors. And that's about it.
Angela, thank you. I admire your poise and your maturity and your, your explanation of the benefits of the program, so thanks so much.
Thank you.
It's not easy to join a, be in a public meeting like this, so great job. Thanks so much. Also, I don't know if anybody else wants to share any thoughts. Chris Montaigne is with us. Chris works for us in the central office and was kind enough to take comment in turn as well. So anyone else, feel free to join in.
Yes, I would love to talk about my intern. Kitty was my intern, and she was fantastic. You know, she had an additional challenge. She, English is her second, her second language, so she had to overcome that as well. So she came into us, and she was such a quick learner, and she was very excited to be there every day. And she didn't really, you know, she didn't mind that she was doing a lot of the same things over and over again, but we would have little chats every day, and we would talk about different things that go on in the business office and how the whole process of the business office works. And so she, she did learn. She didn't necessarily get to see everything, but I did try and show her a bunch of things, you know, on how all of, from start to finish, all of our processes, you know, come into play and why she was doing what she was doing and how important it was for her to do that. She's, she, she, her and I have a really great relationship now. She comes in to see me at least once or twice a week to say hello. She was so excited. She came in and said, told me that she got accepted to her first choice of colleges. So, and she was so excited. It was actually the first time I saw her without a mask. And that was, I, it took me a minute to figure out, I was like, oh, wait. So it was really exciting. She's, she's a, she's a very, she's a very hard worker, and she's a really, really sweet kid, and it's just, it was, been really nice to have her in my office a couple, a few times a week.
That's outstanding. Thank you, Chris, and thanks for hosting a student intern. We have, we have certificates for all of our placement coordinators, for all of our mentors, and we'll, we'll send those off in the mail. Once again, thank you, Erin. Thank you, Mr. Landers, for supporting this great program, and I'm not sure if the committee has any thoughts or questions that they might have for anybody on the panel there.
Yeah, thanks to everybody for joining us. This is wonderful. I mean, this is a program that we are really excited about, and to hear from all of you, it's, it's really a treat. So thank you all for joining us. Committee members, comments, questions? Gianna?
Yeah, thanks, Kevin. Like everybody's saying, thank you to-
Um, like everybody's saying, thank you to everybody that's a part of this. Angela, I just wanted to say good luck, because I, I know, um, I have a brother and, and some friends who, you know, studied and, and took the real estate. So you're just gonna do awesome and it's so exciting that you're actually taking the course right now, um, and that you get to take the exam. And I just, I'm super excited for you and, and I just know you're gonna do awesome. Um, and it's, it's quite an accomplishment. It's a, it's a, it's a huge undertaking, so just good luck with it. And not that you need luck, you're gonna do awesome, but, uh, just wanted to say, you know, thank you for representing Long Meadow High School in the way that you have been.
Thank you so much. That means a lot.
If I can just mention one thing, Angela's been phenomenal and has Max. Right now, we literally have agents in our office fighting over them. When they get their license, they're courting them to try and get them to be on their teams. They're, they just really have impressed us with their maturity, their professionalism, their ability to learn quickly and ask great questions. So we appreciate the opportunity to be part of the program. So thank you.
That is, that is wonderful. Thank you so much for that comment, Karen. Other comments or questions from the committee? Suzy.
Yeah, thank you so much. I think when, uh, when we realize that we can partner with the community to give our learners even more learning opportunities, it's just an incredible thing when this all comes together. Because we know that learning does not end when, uh, the, when the bell rings at the end of the day. There's actually so much more that happens, uh, beyond the classroom walls and you're proof of that. And just by taking a chance and giving this placement to these learners, we're, we're so appreciative. I mean, this is just the perfect example of a community working together to provide really great opportunities for our learners. And, and yeah, you're gonna leave with a, with a license? Like, I mean, that's incredible. That is, you know, no, no delay on that dream. Um, you're, you're gonna, you're gonna work through that now while you're already, you know, still in high school, which is, which is phenomenal. So kudos to you, the student, and kudos to this community of Long Meadow for taking a chance and making this work. So, thanks.
Absolutely. Gianna, keep going.
Unless anybody, I just, I, I, I just wanted to also say that to Erin, um, so I'm, I'm in a small school, 300 kids, elementary school, but, um, I do the community partnership coordination and I also supervise a bunch of interns. So I know it is, it, just thank you, cause I, I know the time and energy and the coordination and the communicating and the, you know, making sure that everything's falling into place. I know the, the, the significance of that, of that effort. And so I just wanted to say thank you for that, because it's huge and it's already making an amazing difference for our, our students, our staff, and, and our community. So thanks, Erin.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
If we were on Zoom, I would have added a little thumbs up.
We all would have, absolutely, yeah. And Sue's got the applause on there, so thank you. No, this is great. Absolutely. And, and Marty, do you mind going through the list of the other mentors and mentees now? That might be a good time to, to share that and, and give us the rundown, so everybody gets recognized for their great work.
Sure. So we thank Health Trax, Heather Samuelson at Health Trax for hosting Merrick Ball. We thank the sheriff in Monarch Place, uh, and the mentee is Beris Sostreshi, uh, hosted Alessandro Castello, so thank you there. Uh, we had an excellent internship at the Long Meadow Historical Society that was hosted by Melissa Stadolsky. Uh, Chris Cummings worked with her and, uh, they put a Facebook post up, um, not too long ago, that was reflective of the deep research that Chris did. So thank you to the Long Meadow Historical Society. Frederick Carras Elementary School, uh, hosted Shay Hamel. Uh, the teacher there was Kimberly Hixon Torres, so thank you, Kim. Uh, our own IT department under Nick George hosted Eli Koski, so thank you, Nick. Uh, the Long Meadow Town Engineer, Tim Keen hosted Leonard Koznick, so thank you. LaPlante Construction, uh, under the leadership of Bill LaPlante, hosted student Nick Linderos. Uh, Bill had emailed me separately and just, uh, was raving about the, the meaning of the program to LaPlante and his, his, uh, student Nicholas. The Wolverham Animal Hospital, uh, hosted Charlotte Orr, uh, so thank you to Heidi Xander for working with Charlotte. And Pet Printing over at East Long Meadow, uh, hosted student Hannah Tyler. Uh, and that was Cody Alberdi, who was our connection at Pet Printing. So, uh, our list of community partners will no doubt grow and, and I'm sure Erin's Rolodex will, uh, will continue to expand and, and create a bunch of contacts for us for future students.
Thank you, Marty. And Erin, we, we've already thanked you, but we need to continue to do it, because I think Marty's list highlights, uh, the diversity of positions that you found. And, and again, I think it's just wonderful that we have so many community partners and so many students who are interested in this great program. So thank you again. Any more thoughts from the committee? Thanks to everybody for joining us. This has been great. We, uh, we love kicking off our meetings. We love kicking off our meetings with these sorts of presentations. So thank you so much for joining us. A, a great way to get the night started. Tom, thanks for your leadership on this. And Erin, again, thanks for all you did, uh, and everybody for joining us. Thank you so much. All right. I think we are ready to move on to administrative reports. So Marty, you're up first.
All right. So there is a written report in your packet, um, and it did include the, the list of, um, placements for our student interns. I also want to highlight that we had another meeting of our district safety team this week. It was a, it was a very busy meeting. We covered a lot of ground. Uh, crew was due come as a, for pulling together, um, what we call reunification kits. And these kits, um, are large tubs that were distributed to each student, each school, rather. And the kits would help us, uh, respond to an unplanned school evacuation and, uh, the subsequent need for parent-student reunification. So, uh, that work has been underway for some time and so we're happy to realize the establishment of those reunification kits. Uh, our school resource officer, Pam Chaplin, is, uh, making her way to each of the schools to do some staff training around the avoid, deny, defend model, uh, to respond to active shooters. Sadly, it's a reality that, that we need to, uh, plan for fire safety classes. Thanks to the Long Meadow Fire Department for, uh, making their way to our elementary schools to provide some fire safety classes. Um, I also want to note that we have a, um, a revised, uh, school resource officer memorandum of understanding, uh, that MOU was developed in response to, uh, some legislation that emerged in 2018. So we're currently taking a look at that MOU with the Long Meadow Police Department. And if any committee members or community members have any questions about that, I'd be happy to answer those. The, uh, I periodically have an opportunity to attend what we call the, kind of get that on the superintendent's roundtable. And this past week, we had an opportunity to meet with, uh, the area's legislative delegation. Uh, it was a great meeting. It was a, it was a great opportunity to talk to our legislators about the, uh, importance, the value of chapter 70 and express appreciation for the revised funding formula and, and actually the main, you know, the, the state budget is not settled and they are working on establishing, um, an inflation rate that would be the basis for that chapter 70 funding formula. So I remain hopeful that the ultimate inflation rate that the state uses to, to build the chapter 70 formula will be reflective of the historic, uh, inflation rates that we're seeing right now. So, uh, we'll keep you posted on that. Gathered our entire administrative team, uh, last week to, um, participate in a refresher course on bullying, harassment, and civil rights investigations. And, uh, thanks to our, our attorneys, Anna Murphy, Pessy Tumi, and LaHane for pulling that together for us. It was a, a good opportunity for us to, you know, take stock of where we are and, and consider some case studies, uh, around student investigations. So, um, also, uh, this is not in the written report, but I also wanted to circle back on our, uh, the school building project. So as, as the community now knows, we were invited into the eligibility period to address the needs of our middle schools and we're very excited about that. And there's a number of tasks that we need to complete in the course of this eligibility period. It's a 270-day period. Um, it's probably worth noting that one of the primary responsibilities is the establishment of a school building committee. Uh, it's a really important task that we want to get right. I would note that since our eligibility period doesn't actually start till August 1st, it's likely that it will be, there'll be some time will pass before we develop the process for establishing that building committee. And then ultimately, as I currently understand, that the, the appointment to that building committee would be, uh, the purview of the school committee. There are a number of, um, sort of legislatively designated positions on that school building committee, but there, there's a number of sort of at-large positions as well. So we'll be sure to, um, uh, keep the community posted on the, uh, work during that eligibility period. So, uh, and that is all I have for you, but if you have any other, um, questions on any of those items, I'd be happy to, happy to talk.
Comments or questions for Marty? All right. Thank you, Marty.
Thank you.
Sue, Tom. All right. So to me. Um, so I'll just follow up on, on what Marty said about the, this mass school building, um, authorities meeting. It was a wonderful meeting and, and really exciting day for the town that they approved the, you know, us starting the project. Uh, we have a lot of work ahead and I think that's the, the key thing to remind everybody of. We have a lot of work as this committee, uh, the town, uh, there's a, it's a long process. And, and for folks who remember how this building was rebuilt, um, and built anew, uh, there was a lot of work involved and, and the community, um, came together for that project and I'm sure the community will come together for the middle school project. So we will continue to keep everybody posted on how that's going. But it was really a wonderful day for Long Meadow and really exciting to think about the future of our middle schools. Um, yeah, the only other thing that, that I want to say is that, um, thank you to the, the community members who stepped up to run for the school committee. So the election that's happening, uh, in June, we have one person running for the, the two-year seat and five people running for two three-year seats. So, um, we've got a lot of interest and that's a wonderful thing for the town. So thank you to all the people who stepped up, uh, and said that they want to serve on this committee in the future. So thank you. Um, that's all I have. All right. Dagan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Excuse me. Uh, very busy spring at LHS. I'll start with sports. In a week, um, we are starting tryouts for spring sports or just moving into spring sports if they're not a tryout team. Good luck to all, uh, Elancers that are going out for any of sports. I myself am so hyped for my track season. I've been waiting so long, so ready to throw some, throw some discus, throw some shot, but have a good time. Uh, on our classes, very, again, very busy spring. The senior class play, which is going to be Shrek, is going to be the 24th to 26th of this month. Tickets will be sold at the door. Public, please come and support. They, I had a meeting with their class president and their director, Jonah Bressi. It's coming along great. They're making strides in their production. I can't wait to see it. Uh, the junior class is having their delayed sophomore semi, so that's my class. So happy. So our semi-form will be at Twin Hills on April 8th. Doing well on that as well. Sophomores are ha- are planning their current lock-in and their on-track semi for this spring as well, at the same venue, Twin Hills. And then finally, the freshman class had a very successful basketball tournament about a week ago. Yeah, right? Week ago, I, I got to see a little bit of it. Looks like all the freshman classes having a great time. On the other hand, for the school activities, they are currently in our March Madness tournament, uh, consisting of volleyball, basketball, and dodgeball. Dodgeball was Monday, uh, today was volleyball, and then tomorrow will be basketball. And then that would be our first round, moving into our second round. And finally, club activities. This is my time to shine, since I'm the president, I'm one of the co-presidents of the Model Congress and Model UN team. We are, we want the club to really, COVID was not our greatest year. We're, we were struggling a little bit. We want to get back on track, back to where we were pre-COVID, which was 14 members strong, going to different conferences, whether that be the Princeton Conference in DC, which I would love to go to in the fall, the Brown Conference, Harvard Conference, anything like that. We are hopefully constructing, and hopefully we'll be able to run a inside conference ran by our team for other schools at the high school. Basically training up other schools, training ourselves to get that, to create interest for the club, not in just in our school, but in other schools for the Model Congress and Model UN program. So that is underway for class activities, I mean, uh, club activities. So thank you very much. That is all I have to say.
Thank you, Dagan. Lots of excellent updates. Thank you for keeping us in the know and what's going on. Uh, other reports? LPVAC, Mary?
Uh, no report. We have a meeting tomorrow night.
Excellent. Uh, energy and sustainability. We had a meeting last week and there are two things to report. Uh, so one, we're focused on geothermal energy. And so we had a good chat about geothermal energy. So that's something that the committee is really interested in and I think is going to be, uh, a really important future, um, heating opportunity and potentially for, for school buildings, um, in the future. And the other thing is that we have, we're hosting, um, a workshop, and I want to get the name of it right. So we're hosting a food waste reduction workshop at the library on April 11th at 6 o'clock. Um, and that's something that we're hoping that members of the community will take advantage of, uh, especially businesses that generate significant amounts of food waste. Uh, so that's something, again, that I think is going to be a, a great resource to the community. And that's it for energy and sustainability. Chiana, SEAL.
Thanks, Kevin. So SEAL Special Education Alliance of Long Meadow continues their advocacy and awareness efforts. They're collaborating and, um, outreach into the community. They have their next meeting Wednesday, April 13th at 7:00 PM. Right now, it is still virtual and you can find meeting information at sealma.org. And I just wanted to also note that, you know, their, their efforts, I talk every time at these meetings about the value of their efforts, um, in particular for our students who require, you know, special education services. Um, and I make it clear that, you know, you don't have to have a student who requires those services in order to engage, uh, with this, these informative sessions. And I have been taking information back to my own school and sharing with my district colleagues. And so I just think it's a testament again to the, you know, to the work of Jean and, and Megan, um, and, um, and Diane, sorry Diane, um, you, you know, in, in keeping this effort going. And I just think it's important to understand that the information, you know, it goes a long way. And so, you know, the, the, the efforts that they all are doing here and, and we all are doing here in Long Meadow, um, are helping students beyond, you know, the, the, the Long Meadow borders. And, and I just think that's important, because it just means a lot in terms of, you know, they're, they're researching who to have come and speak, uh, they're following guidelines that are set by, by the state and by, you know, um, national guidelines. And again, I just think it's, it's just great work, um, education and advocacy and awareness. And I just want to say thank you to them and encourage people again, please check out sealma.org.
Thank you, Gianna. Do we have any tax ceiling update? No. All right. So we are done with administrative reports. Next up are subcommittee reports and we have a whole bunch of stuff from the finance subcommittee. So Tom, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. Good evening. So finance subcommittee met on Friday, March 11th. Uh, on your agenda tonight are a couple of items for consideration. The first item is approval of school choice slots for the 22-23 school year. We currently have 40 students enrolled in Long Meadow through the choice program, of which one student would be graduating. Um, so based on, uh, what the finance sub discussed, looking at projected enrollments and class size for next year, they, uh, put forward a, um, recommendation of one seat at grade one, two seats at grade two, and one seat at grade four. Um, if this, uh, recommendation is approved by school committee, it would give us an enrollment of 43 school choice students for next school year. The program operates based on, um, approval of $5,000 the receiving district gets from the sending community and then, uh, additional compensation if there are services associated with the student that comes to Long Meadow. It is a lottery that is performed, so an application would be submitted. would be submitted by individual families that are interested in applying for one of the open slots. And then a random lottery is done. The chair of the school committee usually selects from the paper applications. That's witnessed by myself and Diane. So happy to answer any questions members might have in regards to the program or the recommendation that Finance Sub discussed.
Questions for Tom? Gianna?
Thanks, Tom. Thanks, Kevin. So it's, it's first grade, second grade, and fourth grade. And was there any, like, I know you looked at the, the incoming, or the projected populations. I'm just curious, because it's all elementary. Is it like usually, I can't remember. Is it usually all elementary, or is it like?
Yeah, I think it's jumped around a little bit, Gianna. I think we primarily looked at elementary for choice, but I do believe this past year we might have added a couple slots at the transition grades, ninth and sixth this year.
Okay.
I think sixth grade has about 110 kids in it. The Rising Sixth next year, and the Rising High School, I think, has about the same number of kids coming in as graduating. And I think, as you see later on in the agenda, I think they chose to maybe look to add Metco slots into those two grades instead of choice.
Okay.
Other questions? So Tom, can you just remind us when kids are invited by school choice, when they come to Long Meadow, they can stay their entire school career, correct? It's not, they have to go back in. It's, we invite them, they're here as long as they would like to stay?
Correct. Once they get selected through the lottery, they become a student of the Long Meadow Public Schools for their, their time here through graduation.
Thank you. We have a possible motion?
I move that the school committee approve opening seats for school choice students in the 2022-2023 year in the following grades and number of seats per grade. First grade, one seat. Second grade, two seats. And fourth grade, one seat.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? And I just want to check. I don't see any school committee members on Zoom. Okay. We will vote. Susie?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Gianna?
Yes.
And yes for me. Tom?
The Metco program is the next item, which was discussed at Finance Sub. Again, a program which allows slots to be opened up for students from Springfield to submit an application for acceptance into districts that have, that participate in the Metco program and identify slots for next year. It is also a lottery that is conducted by Springfield instead of Long Meadow or the receiving district. The, we currently have 35 students in Long Meadow through the Metco program. Two of them will be graduating. There are currently two seniors that'll be graduating this year. The program is run on a grant basis, so the state, through the state budget allocates an amount to each district based on the number of students in the prior year that are in their district through the Metco program. This year, we are currently receiving $243,000 in grant revenue for, for the students that are here through the Metco program. Some of that money has to be used to support the transportation costs, to ensure that they can get to and from the schools that they are enrolled in. So about $175,000 or so of that is used towards transportation costs. Finance Sub did put forward a recommendation to add 11 slots next year. Four would be in kindergarten, three of them would be in second grade, and four of them would be in ninth grade. And again, I was looking at enrollment and trying to place them so that the additional students wouldn't, wouldn't require an additional teacher based on hope or expected class size in those grades.
Questions for Tom? Susie?
So, so that means the, that we'll be looking at 46 students for next year, or this is third, this?
Forty-four.
Forty-four.
We have thirty-five.
I thought you said thirty-five to?
We're losing two.
Oh, we're losing two.
Two would graduate, so we would be at 11.
Okay. And we have a Metco coordinator in the district, correct, that is a liaison between Springfield and Long Meadow?
And the families, correct.
Right. And so if a district chooses to increase its numbers, you know, at what threshold would, you know, additional support from that coordinator be kicking?
It's all automated through Springfield. Now, the lottery, that was a major part of it prior, and so that's been a lot easier. I actually manage the Long Meadow side for that.
But in terms of the support for kids?
In a non-COVID year, you know, we typically do two or three parent nights for Metco, and those are done in a large group. So, you know, I would say upwards of over 50 would be, would be fine, you know, to manage.
Okay.
For one person, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, just from, from my perspective, as a, as a committee member, knowing that our goals are to increase, you know, the, really the equity and experience of all of our learners, it's a win-win to, you know, really work with and invite in and welcome, you know, learners from, and continue to increase that number from, from Springfield in particular. And, you know, the, just the exposure and the experience of, of, you know, diversifying our, our student population is critical to our goals as a, as a school committee. And who better to serve than our neighbors just, just across the way?
Yeah, I agree.
Other comments or questions? So Tom, just, you know, for folks who might be new to this, can you just remind us the difference between school choice and Metco?
The Choice Program allows a student to apply from any community. They're not, it's not restricted to a certain community of current residency, whereas Metco is specific to Springfield. It used to be specific zip codes years ago, but now it's, any resident of Springfield can apply to enroll or be selected, hopefully through the lottery, for a Metco slot. There are additional communities besides Long Meadow, I believe, East Long Meadow, South Lucollin, Hampton Wilberham, also participate in the program. So when they apply, they don't necessarily apply to a specific district. They submit an application, and then they're, the lottery is based on the number of slots that each community identifies for next year. Similar to the Choice Program, though, once a student is selected through the lottery, they become a student of the Long Meadow Public Schools and are here for the duration of their education through 12th grade.
Great. Thank you. Other comments or questions?
No, just thank you for putting together for both of these applications. It's good to see that we have so many slots open for the coming year, and look forward to seeing even more moving forward.
I see that Jamie is going to join us. We have a possible motion?
I move that the school committee accept students in the Metco program for the 2022-2023 school year in the following grade level and number of seats. For kindergarten, four seats. For second grade, three seats. And for ninth grade, four seats.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? We will vote. Susie?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Gianna?
Yes.
Jamie?
I'm not prepared for the discussion.
Jamie, are you there?
I guess he's still getting.
All right, I think Jamie's still trying to join us. Yes for me. So the motion passes. All right. So the preschool fee?
Thank you. Also for consideration tonight is a, the preschool fee for the FY23 school year. The current fee is $2,100. We currently run a half-day program that is about two and a half hours in AM and PM session. It's a peer model program. So students that are there as a peer model pay the tuition that the district charges. Finance Sub recommended that there be a slight increase of $100 for the tuition for FY23. And that was based on the fact that we're, just costs are increasing, obviously, not only in terms of staffing, but supplies, materials, and the like. So they felt that a modest increase to reflect those increasing costs was, was appropriate. So the increase, the increase would raise it to $2,200 for the 22-23 school year. Currently have about 35, 37 students in the preschool program that are peer models that pay the tuition. There also is a, there's an opportunity, yes, to submit for a reduced rate based on economic conditions that, that an application can be submitted for review.
Comments or questions? Nicole?
I think you might have kind of answered my question in the last moment, but just as a reminder, can you remind me, the peer models are the students who pay towards the preschool. If a student has special education needs, they do not need to pay for preschool services. They qualify to attend?
Correct.
Correct? Okay. Thank you.
There's about 70 students in the program, so about half of them are peer models or so.
Okay.
Other comments or questions? We have a possible motion?
I move that the school committee set the preschool rate for the 2022-23 school year as $2,200 for the half-day program, a discount of $50 for half-day, and $100 for full-day programs will also be offered to parents who pay the tuition in full by August 1st.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
I just have a quick question, Kevin.
Sure.
It's probably a really silly question, because I know that it's implied, but a discount of $50, a discount of $50 for half-day and $100 for full-day programs will also be offered to parents who pay the tuition in full by August 1st. And I was wondering, should it say by August 1st of that school year? I feel like somebody could pay by August 1st the next, like?
It does say the rate for 2022-2023 in the sentence above.
I don't think you could wait till the year.
Yeah, I don't think this would be applied in future years because you?
You have to pay a deposit in order to save your slot, and then we do installment payments after that. The first half is due in the fall, and then the second half is due in midwinter, early winter, so.
Okay. Just to follow up on Gianna's point, do we, do we revisit this yearly, annually? Do we revisit this as a Finance Sub Committee annually?
We do. Yeah, we vote the tuition each year.
So we have, yeah. So it's a, it's an annual process anyway?
Okay.
So we're referencing the 2022-23 school year in the first sentence, and it's part of the entire motion?
Yeah, I just don't remember the, the discount. I guess I'm getting thrown off. I don't remember that part of it, but, you know.
Was that recommended by the, was that always in play?
It has been. I think we added the full-day language, because we were thinking of maybe offering a full-day program, but we, we don't currently offer a full-day program. They're all half-day for peer models.
I did just turn 50, so my memory is not.
So Tom, can you just clarify that last thing you said? We're giving a discount for a program we don't offer?
No, I, I think the language was intended, it might have been last year when it was in the motion, when we were considering maybe trying to offer a full-day program. It never happened, and I think maybe the language just got copied over from the previous year's motion. So we could strike the full-day program. I don't see us moving towards a full-day program in 22-23.
That was going to be my question, is what is our rate for a full-day program?
Yeah, we don't, we don't have, we don't have one, right.
So I would entertain, hey, would you like to revise your motion?
I will revise my motion to strike and $100 for full-day.
Second.
And add, sorry, and add, just to be clear, August 20, August 1st, 2022.
Our second or?
Second.
We're okay with that?
Yep, perfect.
All right. So we have revised the motion. Any additional comments or questions? Jamie, anything you want to add?
I'm all, I'm all set. I heard, I heard the majority of it.
Excellent.
He's held up a revision.
I think we're just going to vote on the revised motion, because it was, you revised your own motion.
Correct. Okay.
We're going to try and be expeditious.
Okay, good.
All right. So we're voting on the revised motion that simply struck the $100 for the program that we don't have and added the clarity of August 1st, 2022.
That's correct.
So that's what you see in front of you, minus that one phrase, add the date.
Yeah.
Add the year. Wrong. Okay. Susie?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Gianna?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
And yes for me. All right, budget?
Yeah, so tonight, you have also in your pocket some information regarding the FY23 budget that the school committee adopted back in mid-February. Not sure if the superintendent wants to add something before I get into the details of the recommendation from Finance Sub. Marty, I don't know if you?
Yeah, I'll jump in, and you can take over the details, Tom. So, school committee, as you know, you premiered the FY23 budget on February. And at that point, it was essentially handed over to the town, and with the understanding that we needed a good understanding of how that budget request fit into the fiscal picture of the town of Long Meadow. And on March 7th, the town manager had presented a budget to the select board that was reflective of the select board's targets and goals, and also reflective of the recommendations of the Finance Committee. And so that budget that the town manager presented on March 7th included appropriation that was $200,000 below the appropriation that was voted or acquired by the school committee at the February 15th meeting. So the, the discussion at Finance Subcommittee was whether or not there was a possibility for the school committee to reconsider its budget in light of the fiscal challenges that the town is facing. I think we, we've always wanted to be good partners with the, with the town, and we've always wanted to present a budget that's reflective of the needs of our students, but also reflective of the, of the town priorities and requirements, and a budget that's manageable as well. And so Finance Subcommittee considered a recommendation, a straight recommendation to revise the FY23 budget request by the school department. And Tom, I think it could turn it over to you to fill in some of the details.
So what you have tonight in front of you are a number of documents outlining a reduction of $125,000 to the general fund. Since the budget wasn't initially developed back in January, we've, we've recognized there are some additional attrition opportunities that are folded into this revised budget. We also looked at the high school staffing again, and we believe there's an opportunity for a point, a reduction of a half a teacher. It'll probably depend on the sign-ups in terms of what department it'll be in, but right now, we're, we're anticipating that that should not have an impact on offerings or class size next year. And the third area is a reduction to the computer hardware line of $45,000. We have a lease that will be presented at town meeting for authorization for purchasing staff computers. It's a four-year lease. The current lease is expiring. The new rate is, is going to cost us less based on less equipment than what we bought previously. So we were able to reduce the amount we have budgeted, again, without any impact to what we're currently providing or needs that we anticipate we'll have as part of the FY23 budget. So again, the reduction would be just to the general fund of $125,000. It obviously increases the difference between our current budget and FY23's proposed budget. It's a $450,000 or so now variance that we're seeing from FY22 to FY23. Our general fund increase, though, would be approximately $970,000 above our current FY22 general fund amount.
Questions? Susie?
So with the reduction of the, so the total reduction from your presentation, the presented budget, and the $200,000 reduction, or?
$125.
$125.
Yes.
Is a, a total reduction of four fifty-two, eight seventy-six?
Correct. That would be all funds. I, I think, I know it gets confused in between the general fund, which is the amount that town appropriates to the schools and grants and special revenues, but yes, that would be the total reduction of all recognized funds that are budgeted.
So the recommendation of the Finance Subcommittee was not to reduce by another two hundred thousand dollars, instead to reduce only by one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars?
Correct.
And I, I just wonder if maybe Jamie wants to speak to that at all? Would that be possible, just as a member of the Finance?
Do you mind weighing in on the Finance Sub discussion from your perspective?
Yep, yep, but we, we really discussed kind of where, where we are as a town, what we were being asked, and what puts and takes that we've had since we turned this budget in, you know, what was it, Tom, sixteen weeks ago, whenever we, you know, started this whole process? And Tom had brought to us saying, hey, you know, we do have some good things that have happened in certain areas where we could make some adjustments without, you know, you know, with, with a level service, meaning, you know, that we're taking care of both the students and the staff. And we can make those adjustments, but, you know, I don't think we can go all the way to where the town is without, you know, potentially impacting. And at that point, we said, well, how far can we get? And he walked us through the two different items that he just focused on, and that's how we got back to that hundred and twenty-five number that we thought was appropriate. It was responsible from the town perspective, but also responsible to the schools where we weren't gonna impact the students.
Thank you, Jamie.
Thank you.
And again, Marty, one, just one sec.
Our conversations with the town manager, you know, in explaining the challenge of getting to the full two hundred thousand dollars, I think she, she understood and recognized that. And likewise, we, we understand and recognize the, some of the challenges they're facing on the town side. But we do anticipate that the, you know, this would put the town in position where the town manager could develop a, a budget that's balanced and where we would go into town meeting with a, a budget that where the school department request is aligned with the appropriation by the select board.
Yeah, thank you, Marty, and that was what I wanted to, to just summarize with. The town manager asked us to cut two hundred thousand dollars. We said we can cut a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. And so it sounds like we are close to agreement with the town manager that this will enable her to put forward a balanced budget. The select board would then vote on that budget, and then that budget would go to town meeting. So we're at the process. Now we're essentially negotiating with the town manager, kind of via the select board as well, but we're not to the point where the select board has voted on a budget that we haven't agreed with, right? We're in that negotiating process. So I think we're in a, a pretty standard situation, Tom. This happens every year where there's this give and take between the town and the schools, and, and that's the process we're in now. Is, is it fair to characterize that? It's like this is the way that this budget process works?
It is. If you recall, last year, we also came back and had to amend our budget. It was a little later in the year. That process required an amendment at town meeting. If it's, if school committee adopts the recommendation tonight, and the select board approves it, I believe, next week, then that would prevent an amendment needing to be made at town meeting in terms of the budget that the school committee put forward based on what you voted.
Thank you.
Yeah, I was just gonna ask, so if, if by chance, the select board, when they meet, does, asks for further, is that, is that possible? Has that happened? I'm just wondering.
Not in my recollection. I believe if they have a balanced budget that meets the goals...
They'll be able to...
Yeah, I don't, I don't recall a situation where they've not adopted the town manager's recommendation.
Yep, good to know. Just wanted to check.
Yeah, absolutely. Other comments or questions? Nicole?
No, just comment to say thank you guys for taking the time to, all the time that you have put into this over the last few weeks, and I appreciate the explanations tonight of where we are in the process and how everything's coming together. So thank you for all of this.
Absolutely. We have a possible motion?
I move, oh, go ahead, go ahead. I move that the school committee approve a revised FY twenty-two, twenty-three school department budget in the amount of forty million, one hundred and eighty-two thousand, four hundred and fifteen dollars and thirty-six cents, with a general fund allocation of thirty-seven million, three hundred and ninety-five thousand, eight hundred and fifty-nine dollars and thirty-six cents.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Jim?
Thanks, Kevin. I, I should have said it earlier, but just wanted to, Jamie used the, the words, and I, and I had the opportunity to talk to Tom earlier, because I did have some questions. I had responded, you know, to the two hundred thousand. I was concerned. So, so thank you, Tom, for, for answering my questions. And I also talked to superintendent last week, so thank you, superintendent. I just wanted to, to especially appreciate the, the, as again Jamie said, financial responsibility, fiscal responsibility, because I think it's important to note that we're looking at what, for me, seems like our hardest, since I've been on the school committee, our hardest budget year. And I just want to point out and appreciate the efforts for that responsibility. I think it, I think it makes a big difference.
Absolutely. Thank you, Gianna. Jamie, anything else you want to add? Okay. All right, we will vote. Suzie?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Gianna?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
And yes for me. Thank you, Tom. We have no other Subcommittee reports. We have no ongoing business.
I'm sorry. It's not in the minutes, but we do have a consent agenda for building use forms. Do we need to do this?
Oh, that's a new business.
Oh, is it? I didn't even see it.
Oh, no, it isn't. Right.
You are, thank you for catching that, Nicole. I don't know where that's supposed to be, Tom.
I don't know where it's supposed to be either.
It says agenda item nine, which implied here.
Usually it's under the Finance Subcommittee.
It's, it's in a...
Yes, yes, it's usually under the Finance Subcommittee, so thank you for catching that. So, Tom, are you prepared to at least give some explanation today?
Sure. There are, there were three building use requests, two of them, one from, both, I believe, two from the Blueberry Hill PTO. One is for Blueberries Got Talent, and the other is for a five-k run and carnival, both in the spring. They, the fi- the five-k and the carnival would be for use of the Blueberry School, primarily for bathrooms. The, uh, Blueberry, Blueberries Got Talent is for the high school, I believe sometime in April. And the third one is for a dance recital by the Long Meadow Parks and Recs Dance Program. Again, that would be at the high school, I believe, in some dates in May.
Do you have any concerns?
No concerns.
So, the deal with the consent agenda is we do not discuss it. It just gets motioned, and if nobody wants to remove an item from the consent agenda, then we vote. So, Nicole, would you like to move the consent?
Sure. I move that the school committee approve the consent agenda for building use requests dated today. Dated March fifteenth, twenty-twenty-two.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Would anyone like to remove an item from the consent agenda for discussion? Then we will vote. Suzie?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Gianna?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
And yes for me. Nicole, thank you for catching.
No problem. And just also to report, just for anybody who might be wondering, curriculum sub is scheduled to meet before our next meeting on March twenty-ninth, so we'll have a report for you at that meeting.
Wonderful. Thank you. Gianna?
I don't, I don't know how to do this, or, but I see that Bill Aplant has joined, and he was one of the intern supervisors, so I don't know.
I think we can revisit that agenda item and thank Bill. So I think that's completely appropriate. Bill, thanks for joining us, and thank you for all your work. Marty, I don't know if you want to say anything specifically about Bill and, and his mentor, mentee relationship?
Oh, I mean, well, there he is. Thank you, Bill, for joining us. If you, if you, we hate to put you on the spot, but first of all, thank you for serving as a mentor to one of our students. And if you'd like to share any reflections on what a mentee you and your organization and student that you work with, we'd be happy to hear some thoughts. So thanks, thanks for joining.
Sure. First off, I'd like to apologize. I had a meeting that ran late, and I'm sorry I wasn't here sooner. We had a great experience with Nick, and Aaron did a great job. He was a wonderful person, was there all the time, worked hard, asked a lot of questions. It was just refreshing to see him do such a, such a good job. One of the things that we've come across often is that many times, you know, it's looked down upon to go into the trades, and people underestimate the opportunity that's out there going into the trades. And I think Nick has recognized that opportunity. We're hopeful that we can hire him full-time and continue to train him and watch him flourish, because he's, he's done a great job. And I think this is a great program to give the kids some of the experiences they wouldn't normally have throughout high school. So I appreciate the relationship. I'm hoping we can do it again. We've done internships with students of the trade schools in the past, but I'm, I'm hoping we can do it again.
Yeah, that's outstanding. I think, hey, you, you echoed some of the things that were said earlier, and that is the questions that our students ask. And I, I appreciate hearing that, because I, I think that's such an important part of learning, is when students learn how to ask a good question, and they learn how to navigate uncertainty. So, thanks again for being a great partner.
Thank you. It was a great experience.
And, and Bill, thanks for joining us. Not a problem at all that you joined when you could. We're just happy that you were able to join us and, and share your thoughts. It's great to hear how well these internships are working out, and so thanks again for participating.
Thank you.
Thank you for catching that, Gianna.
In my awkward way.
We got there. I think we are to new business. It seems like we are in agreement. All right, new business, a new private school. Marty, are you gonna take this one?
Happy to take it. So we were approached by Christina Pedro, who was actually on our call tonight, and she had informed us that the Tate Learning Center is hoping to introduce a special education day school at, at Long Meadow at four ninety-five, four ninety-four, Conver Street. And per your own policy and per Mass General Law School Committees have to approve the opening of any private school in Long Meadow. And so there's sort of two components to this. One is private day schools, special education day schools need the approval of the Mass Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, because they would potentially be serving students with disabilities at, at the public expense. And then secondly, the, the Tate Learning Center would be the approval of the school committee, because the potentially students attending the Tate Learning Center programs would be fulfilling the state's compulsory attendance law. So there's two components there. At this stage, the committee simply needs to begin its due diligence to ensure that the program at the Tate Learning Center both fulfills the thoroughness and efficiency of a, of a public school. And then the Department of Education similarly sends in a review team, as I understand it, to review the curriculum, the facilities, and the overall program and services. So my, no expectation tonight that the committee approve or not approve the opening of the Tate, or the, the Tate Learning Center in Long Meadow. Simply a recommendation tonight to appoint Jean Fontaine, our People's Services Director, to work alongside the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education in their review. And then at a future meeting, Jean would come back with her findings and a recommendation to the school committee. So otherwise, the, the alternative would be for the committee to conduct its own review, but it seems like it would be more efficient to appoint Jean to work alongside officials from DASI to conduct the review. So we're excited to have a partner, a new educational partner here in Long Meadow. Christina and I had some very productive conversations, so I appreciate her bringing me up to speed on, on where they are, where the Tate Learning Center is with their progress. And I got an opportunity to do a little homework myself on this. So we've had great conversations, and I think tonight, the recommendation would be to appoint Jean Fontaine to help to conduct that review, so that the committee can make an informed decision.
Thank you, Marty. I'm just wondering if our, our guests who came for this want to say anything before we continue with the committee?
Sure. I just, a big thank you to Marty for taking the time to talk with me about our program. I had sent along a very long-winded, attached letter, formal letter, describing our program, but Marty did a great job sort of introducing what we're doing over at five ninety-four Conver Street. Just so excited to have found, finally found a home in Long Meadow, and really to just answer any questions that the committee might have about what we're setting out to do.
Excellent. Thank you. Questions, comments? We have a possible motion?
I move that the school committee appoint Ms. Jean Fontaine, Director of People's Services, to participate jointly with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education in the review of the proposed program for the Tate Learning Center.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Scene done. We will vote. Suzie?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Gianna?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
And yes for me. Thank you and, and good luck to the Tate Learning Center.
Thanks for everybody. Much appreciated.
You're welcome.
Be in touch.
I think we are done with our new business. Marty, you had mentioned to me, perhaps we do not need an executive session. Do we need an executive session?
Yeah, I think no compelling need on our side administratively, but obviously, it's the, it's the discretion of the committee. They felt like an executive session might be valuable. We do have a meeting of the Negotiations Subcommittee tomorrow afternoon, so we might be in a position to have better, clearer information for the whole committee. So Marty, check in with our Negotiations Subcommittee Chair. I think Val is gonna be on any thoughts on that.
I, I do believe at this point, our, you know, we'd be better served with an executive session after the next negotiation session.
Excellent. So it sounds to me like we do not need an executive session this evening?
That's correct.
Excellent. So I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Suzie?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Gianna?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
And yes for me. Thank you, everyone. We will see you in two weeks' time. Have a good night.